December in order to have sufficient time to go through the public this and for the regulator to um over the past two years of the price applications in FY twenty three and twenty four. Uh under the twenty twenty three maximum price methodology, this is the process that has been followed. That um in the application, the best available and the most recent available information is utilized. And then as part of the um the the public participation process and the engagement between the applicant and the regulator on further and additional information in order to enable NASA to consider and approve the maximum price applied for the additional information is then supplied uh when it becomes available. So from our point of view, there 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 isn't a departure.
The information that was calculated to assist and facilitate the um so that we demonstrate the calculation and what the outcome will be if then we use the information that you have submitted. So NERSA did that calculation and therefore that is why with to clarify that aspect so that it is never seen as what NERSA preempted before it takes the decision.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just with with respect, um just allow me a clarification as well. I'd I think um the the only point that I was highlighting is that from a process point of view, there is a preference expressed in the consultation document of an actual price being approved to apply on one uh July, and it's that process preference that I was referring to. Um I think as applicant, we fully understand that as part of the public engagement and public uh um uh participation process, NERSA evaluates the application, issues the the consultation document, but the consultation document in no way um prejudged or um now that it is obviously available. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Menkes, for for that. And Mr. Menkes, may I check? So with the uh what exactly has changed? Did that price, because you indicated uh information that was not available at the time of um uh NERSA assessing uh for purposes of consultation? And um and now the information became available during the process of consultation? And therefore also Sasol is a stakeholder because it has now become a NERSA process? So you've submitted your application, now it is a NERSA process. Now you submitted information as one of the key stakeholders during that process. So can you then, uh because our concern is the fact that the change is not insignificant. When we looked at what you as a stakeholder submitted, and remember you are the stakeholder who is also an applicant. So when we then looked at the original information that was before us, then take what you submitted during the public consultation process, and then we did the calculations, we noticed that and the the change is not insignificant. I think it is um uh the average of about five percent even on the maximum price, as well as the change in the acquisition cost, and I think also on the profit margin. So there are changes in those components of the price, and you know that we are using a cost plus methodology. So this change in the cost that is critical, and you also confirm that there was a change in the acquisition cost, acquisition cost. Maybe you need to also adjust uh for the purpose of the record and also for stakeholders that are in the platform. And then secondly, obviously, when we calculate that change in the acquisition cost, it affects the margin component of them of the price, of the maximum price. And in the end, the outcome then changes. So it will seem therefore that some particulars of the original application have changed, and stakeholders did not get the opportunity to then see what Sasol, yes, as a stakeholder, but Sasol as an applicant, has now provided new information that the regulator needs to take into account, of which information then is likely to affect the outcome or the decision of the regulator. And stakeholders would have been surprised as to how did that happen. Remember, remember that the powers that we have as the regulator are not the powers to set, are the powers to approve. Now, if all of a sudden during the original application, you made a request. Now, at the stage of the consultation, you bring new information, and then what then happens? So we wanted to make sure that that procedure, in terms of even allowing or admitting certain information at a particular stage, it is fair. So that is all that we are saying here. So hence, we are bringing this to the attention of um Sasol gas. And and we would like to give you that opportunity. I will also invite you, the members of the panel, and we may also have to uh give the other um 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 participant on the issue of the procedure first, because that's what we need to deal with and confine ourselves before we proceed. Thank you.
And I think, Madam Chair, um uh may of the maximum price that the applicant is allowed to charge. Um I think for adjustment of the um price at which the producers um in um in addition to the quarterly adjustment of the um price, there is also because of the fact that those prices are denominated in um in US dollars, there is also on a monthly basis, an impact on the um the cost of the gas um as a result of the exchange rate that that applies. Now, we have um as as an applicant, obviously, as part of the engagements between stakeholders and the regulator leading up to the adoption of the methodology, we've submitted uh extensive arguments and and comments on the appropriateness of a cost plus um uh type of approach to the um the maximum gas price methodology. And that is is not the debate today. Once we are in a process where under that methodology, we um we bring the price applications in compliance with that methodology, then obviously the the applicant is faced with the 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 um the challenge that this cost has to be reflected in the price as closely um as administratively possible to the time in which the movements, both increases and decreases, take place in in the actual underlying um acquisition cost. And as I've indicated, that changes on a quarterly basis. Now, in order to address that, the the practice that has been implemented um um on application from Sasol Gas and by approval by NASA is that this price is determined on a quarterly basis. But in order to ensure that we are using actual information and we are not using projected or expected or um um budgeted figures, the the way that the adjustment is accommodated in the setting of the maximum price is by lagging the adjustment by one quarter. Now, what that means is that the price that will uh apply on one July is a price that is determined based on the um based on the the volumes and the actual acquisition cost that occurred in the period from January twenty twenty five until March twenty twenty five. That actual information is available, that actual volume information is available and has been submitted to the regulator. And that then determines the actual maximum price based on the formula in the methodology that that will then apply from one July. And in that way, we strike a balance between the fact that um there is a cost plus approach to setting the maximum price, but that we also accommodate the need for certainty and transparency by allowing the regulator in its role of monitoring the implementation of the approved maximum price um to have access to actual information, and it's the obligation of the applicant then obviously to timiously provide that information to the regulator. And in 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 uh in the past two financial years, that um approach has has been followed and has been um resulting in a a a balance between the interest of the the supplier and the the other stakeholders in the market. Um I think the
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mr. Menkes, Mr. Menkes, I uh I just want to request um Gerald, can you please deal with those that have their mics on because they are really interrupting the flow of the proceedings here? They want to hear Mr. Menkes clearly uh in terms of his explanation. Please, can you assist us? Mr. Menkes, you may please proceed.
Yeah, I think the last two points that I just want to touch on, Madam Chair, is the first one is that as far as the five-year average of the EBITDA component of the price calculation is concerned, again, it's in the interest of both um the um the applicant as well as the stakeholders in the market that the most recent available information of that five years be utilized in that calculation. Um at the time that the the um the application was compiled, the five-year information that was available ran from twenty nineteen until twenty um twenty three. Um and then subsequent in um after the the application was submitted during the first part of of this year, the that that twenty twenty four information on those benchmark companies also become available, and um that that calculation has to be taken into account in the the regulator's consideration and approval of the maximum price that um that is then approved to be implemented from document, the regulator has pointed to that fact. We as applicant fully understand that. And the um the information and the data sources that is referred to in the um in the 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 maximum price methodology is publicly available and therefore um the fact that in its final consideration of the price application, um and the fact that that the regulator has access um to that and can take that into account in its approval is not um adversely affecting either the application, the applicant, or the um or the customer. And then lastly, the the fact of the matter is that in the jurisdiction of the regulator in approving the price and also as um stated very clearly in the um in the consultation document as well as previous reasons for decisions on maximum gas price applications, it remains the discretion of the regulator to ultimately take all of the relevant facts into account that the regulator has um acquired through the public participation process in in ultimately making the approval of the maximum price that the regulator is convinced is appropriate to be to be approved. Um and so from that point of view, we we are comfortable that through the public participation process, through the public availability of the information in question, and also through the submission of all relevant information by the applicant as part of the engagement process between itself and the regulator in the um consideration by the regulator of the application, the 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 interests of both the applicant and the the stakeholders in the market is balanced. And is adequately adequate, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Menkes. Um I I we I hear the um the explanation with regards to certain adjustments that may have been necessitated by um um the changes in the exchange rate um and also the need to provide um the actual information as opposed to sort of forecasted information. Is that the only reason that led to the change in these figures? And as I am uh been informed by the team, um there is also information pertaining to other uh sources of gas. Uh for instance, the fuel gas that has been mentioned. Obviously, once you've got the different sources of gas, there's probably um a costs associated. Maybe with that, that could have affected this change. Can you address us before I allow the members to go? Can you address us just on that one issue?
Okay.
The sources of gas that may have had an impact on this. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, as 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 explained, the um the the maximum price is determined with reference to the volume-weighted average cost of acquisition of the gas. In the application, as it was submitted, all of these sources of gas has been uh included and has been um uh uh referred to. Um between the point in which the application was submitted and um the submission of further information by the applicant in response to the consultation document, there has been no changes or any different sources of gas becoming available um or has been uh uh added to to the mix, if I can call it that. Um you refer and asked about the the fuel gas. The fuel gas is a small stream of gas that Sasol Gas acquires in the Sasselburg area and and supplies to a limited there's one or two customers in that area that that there is uh that receives um that type of piped gas. And as you know, all of the different sources of gas um is 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 basically in the hands or in the basket of gas that that Sasol Gas supply, treated as as gas to which this maximum gas price is um applicable. The 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 gas in question is um um makes up less than naught point two percent of the total volume of of the gas, and it also comes um into the calculation at a similar price as the methane-rich gas which um which is um um acquired out of out of Secunda. And as you know, the um the um the methane-rich gas makes up approximately um a thirteen percent of 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 the gas. Um if if one takes into account the the volume information that um the on which the 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 maximum price for one July twenty twenty five is based. Um so there's no additional or different sources of gas that um that is um at this point in time came um onto the table between the time that the application was submitted and today. And you would also see in our presentation, we've indicated that Sasol Gas anticipates um and and lists the particular sources of gas that it anticipates will flow uh during the FY twenty six period or the period that will affect the FY twenty six price. And all of that information um is 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 um part of the the application and the additional information that was submitted um as part of the information requests and the comments on the consultation document.
Very much, Mr. Menkes, for that. And let me check if the members of the regulator um have questions. Uh Madam Sbier, are you covered? Do you have a um a question for clarity?
No, thank you, Chair. Thank you. As some of the issues you you have covered then. Uh I hear also, Mr. Menkes, um with regards to his responses. But I think uh where we are as NERSA, we are coming from the point of saying that we are utilizing a cost plus methodology. So that is where we are starting from. Maybe as Mr. Menkes is saying, there there might have been issues that they are still having, but that's a separate issue. But where we are uh is that um uh one of the statements also you mentioned is that the practice was that uh whenever there is latest information, you will submit uh later. But when it comes to cost information, which will have the impact on the on 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 the final cost to be determined, I I think it's a different issue. It it might have been practiced before, but it is a a a a different issue. I do accept the issue of lagging by a quarter. But some information that you have, which um uh should be then readily available, in my view, should have been submitted originally with the application and not um have the 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 application published and thereafter being submitted. So that is where my issue is. Information like EBITDA. When when you look at whether Sasol or all the companies where you were going to get the 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 benchmarks uh to end in twenty twenty three, I I would think i- it's 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 also incomplete. Because twenty twenty four, when you submitted the application at the beginning of this year, which is twenty twenty five, Private Sector finishes everything it's uh with EBITDA, everything within six months, they are done. So all of that information, in my view, would have been there. So I'm making an example with EBITDA. So we're just clarifying the issue of saying we might understand the issue of uh maybe lagging by three months, but some information needs to have been uh submitted, especially the information that affects the calculation of the final cost. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Menkes. May you, may you please take down that question? I do want to check the other member if he has a question, so that at least you can think about the questions and then you will respond to all the questions. Uh Mr. Mkise?
Thanks, Chaperson. I was briefly disconnected. Uh but I do appreciate what Madam Sbier has put forward already, and I'm in agreement. But we need to also quickly look at the way forward under the circumstances and be able to see how then do we chart the way forward so we can get the best out of the time that we have at hand. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Mkise. And yes, we, the last point is crucial. And hence, we wanted um the 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 applicant to have an appreciation of our concerns, uh especially given the point that the applicant has indicated with regards to any potential delays. But the applicant must also um have an appreciation of the need for the fairness of the of the process by the energy regulator. So really, it is those two issues that are critical here. So that even when we get to what the solution is, at least it is clear that it was on two points, the procedural points, one of information that was not available, the fairness of the process, and also making sure that that is balanced with any uh delays and see uh they and so that we can be able to make sure that we discharged and our our duties insofar as the principles of natural justice are concerned in terms of the uh the fairness of the process that is um conducted by the energy regulator. It is really on those two fundamental issues. That's why we have to have this discussion on the on on record. Mr. Menkes, may you please respond? I would like to also um go to another participant today that represents the customers, so that they also have a reaction um um briefly on the issue of the procedure today and so that we see how we are going to proceed. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, maybe just uh two points in in response. The the first thing is, um as Madam Sbier has pointed out, we are dealing with a cost plus um regime and a cost plus methodology for setting the the um the maximum price for the applicant. Therefore, it is incumbent on the applicant and the regulator to ensure that the actual cost is utilized in order to um in order to set that maximum price. In order to provide for the actual cost to be available, the mechanism that has been implemented is to make the um the 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 volume and the cost information on which the price for a particular quarter is um determined uh in order to match with a quarterly adjustment of the um the acquisition cost in terms of the long-term supply agreement is to allow for time um for that actual information to be available because that um provides the opportunity for the regulator to verify that actual data and to have the certainty and the transparency that the cost plus mechanism is based on an actual cost uh level of the 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 gas in question in the hands of the applicant. As far as the EBITDA information is concerned, the um the 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 application was submitted um um in in December of of last year. The 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 reason for the submission um uh of the application in that timeline is again to ensure that for the purposes of the uncertainty, there is sufficient time for the public participation process and the um consideration process by NASA so that we can have a maximum price decision in time to implement the new maximum gas price from one July, because it is in the supplier's interest as applicant to have that approval by that period of time, and it's also in the interest of the customers and stakeholders to have certainty um before the financial year starts. At that point in time, the financial reports of the um benchmark companies listed in the methodology was not available. The um the financial reporting The financial reporting only takes place in the first few months of the following calendar year. And therefore, as I've earlier indicated, that information is publicly available both to the applicant as well as stakeholders in the market. And to the extent that in its consideration of the maximum price application, the regulator ultimately is convinced that the information of the most recent five years has to include the 2024 period as well. And if that ultimately leads to a difference in the profit percentage that is approved by the regulator, the applicant will have to accept that and understand that within the discretion that the regulator has in considering the price application, that falls within the jurisdiction and the authority of the regulator to ultimately frame its decision like that. So, Madam Chair, I think with the response to Madam Sbier's questions, those are the submissions that we would like to make.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mentes. Mr. Mentes, at this point in time, just for purposes of fairness, I would like to give the opportunity to the other presenter just to respond or weigh in its submissions on the issue that we just discussed. And I would like to call IGUA SA, Mr. Yako Human.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this very important issue.
Mr. Human, I just need to make sure that you take the oath. At least the oath, okay. May you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to give to the panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. May you please state your full name and address at IGUA SA.
Chair, my name is Yako Human. I'm the executive officer of IGUA SA.
Thank you very much. Mr. Human, we're dealing with, only confine ourselves only on the issue of the procedural aspects at this point in time and would like to just hear sort of your submissions before we get to the merits of the matter. Thank you.
Well understood, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this very important matter. I think I just want to make a couple of brief points here. What makes this particular application unique is the uncertainty thereof. And as it stands right now, the application on NERSA's discussion document, SASSL submissions, it is littered with blind spots. In other words, omitted information, which of course may materially impact the outcome of the maximum price which SASSL is applying for. So as it stands right now, what makes this particular application unique is the fact that it's not complete. It seems like we are now learning of additional information that is actually being brought about, that could even further impact this. And that, of course, makes it impossible, in our opinion, to hold a public hearing, because we simply don't know what we're hearing on as far as an outcome is concerned. Having said that, Chair, I think it is critically important for the sake of progressing the matter is that, and this is our humble proposal, is that we postpone this public hearing for a period of two weeks or whatever is deemed to be practical, so that this new information can be incorporated in a discussion document of NERSA. It seems like there's a technical alignment issue in terms of timelines of what is deemed to be included in a particular application period. And I think these technical matters can certainly be dealt with decisively and relatively quickly between SASSL and the regulator. But right now, of course, we've prepared to... But it seems like it's going to be incomplete, simply because we don't know what the outcome of that would be. We do believe that we need to have a speedy outcome here and we cannot simply, and we do want to have a new pricing decision from the 1st of July. I think it is critically important for all parties involved. But we need to deal with a full suite of information. Thank you, Chair. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Human, for your submissions. And I would like now just to Mr. Mentes. Mr. Mentes, there are two things. And also from our side, I think from IGUA SA's side, they are requesting a postponement. Obviously, NERSA will have to consider that. And they have stated also the reasons in terms of the concerns and the new information. And also, they do also commit and made even a proposal that at least two weeks, that is to take into consideration the fact that an efficient decision must be taken on an efficient basis and also as quickly as possible, so that everybody in the industry is aware. Mr. Mentes, on two things. Please, if you can kindly comment on the, or make your submissions on the postponement issue and also the timelines that are proposed. Thank you.
Yeah. I think from the applicant's side, our view would be that the proposed postponement that my colleague, Mr. Human, is suggesting is actually not required. The fact of the matter is that the change is brought about by the actual volume and cost information that underlies the price that is to be implemented from one July. That is information that is submitted to the regulator on a confidential basis, pursuant to the commercial agreements in terms of which that acquisition cost is determined. And therefore, the issue is raised by the regulator to the extent that the information on this particular element of the calculation of the... It will require confidential engagements between the applicant and the regulator. And ultimately, in the reasons for decision that the regulator hands down in coming to the conclusion on the approval of the maximum price to be implemented from one July, it would be possible for the regulator to indicate that it has verified and that it has scrutinized that element of the calculation. As far as the EBITDA information is concerned, we've already indicated the reason why that information was not contained in the application over the five-year timeline as proposed in the consultation document. But as the applicant has also indicated, the calculation of that EBITDA portion is based on publicly available information. And again, within the powers of the regulator to reach an decision on the maximum gas price as applied for, it is possible for the regulator to clearly state the reasons for the decision that it reaches in the decision on the application. So from our point of view, a postponement as proposed is not required to the extent that such a postponement puts under threat the possibility of having a maximum gas price approved within time to be able to notify that with sufficient time to the market and implement it as from the 1st of July. As Mr. Human has indicated, there is a clear agreement that there is an interest both on the applicant's side and on the stakeholder's side that the decision should be reached and handed down in time to be able to allow the applicant to implement it from the first day of the financial year. To the extent that, you know, that possibility is put under threat, we also think that a postponement is not required and should not be implemented. Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you very much. At this point in time, it is NERSA that has to make a determination on whether or not to proceed or to allow postponement. Would like to, I would like now to stand the matter down for the maximum of 10 minutes to allow the members of the energy regulator to consider the way forward. Would request that the other parties stay on the platform and the members of the energy regulator will go to the pre-hearing link so that we discuss the way forward. And then we'll resume the hearing in about five minutes. I don't think it will take more than five minutes. If you can all stay in the platform and then the members of the energy regulator, can you please go to the pre-hearing platform? Thank you very much.
the portion of the, the presentation that deals with the, um, that deals with the transmission tariff application is very short. Um, and just see if I can get it to a full screen there. So, as indicated, the, um, the application is for the, uh, the two financial years FY twenty six and FY twenty seven. This application is based on the twenty seven tariff guidelines and is, um, consistent with those tariff guidelines as well as with the previous submissions that we've made in, 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 in uh, the tariff applications over the past few years. Um, the, um, the different zones, um, is, is, is zone one is, is the, um, the inland portion of the pipeline, uh, network. And then zone two is the, the Secunda-Vitbank middle part of the pipeline network. And then the KZN portion is zo- zone three. And as, um, indicated in the tariff application, the, um, the, the, the third column in the table on the screen indicates the current tariffs that have been, um, approved for the current financial year. And we confirmed then that the application that, um, SASSO Gas is making for the approval of transmission tariffs for the FY twenty six and FY twenty seven uh, periods is set out for the three different zones in the, um, in the fourth and the fifth column in, in that table. As is indicated in the NASA consultation document on this application, um, NASA has, um, reviewed and, um, and scrutinized the calculations of the, um, of the tariff and that these tariffs are, um, the calculations between SASSO Gas and NASA um, in getting to these, um, uh, tariffs that's applied for, um, is aligned and that there is, um, no material differences in the outcome of the, the calculation. And on that basis, the request that, um, that, uh, the applicant then is putting before NASA is that in accordance with the application under consideration by NASA, that the tariffs for zone one, zone two and zone three be approved um, respectfully, uh, respectfully for, um, FY twenty six and FY twenty seven as set out in the tariff application. Um, Madam Chair, that is the submission that we want to make in respect of the transmission tariffs. And, um, obviously my colleague, um, Mr. Beer, um, and, and Mr. Easterman is available also to the extent that there is any questions or any, um, technical elucidation that's required on this, this part of the application. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very much, uh, Mr. Menkes. Uh, members of the energy regulator, uh, do you have any questions of clarity with regards to the transmission tariffs? For the three zones by show fans members? Any questions? Mr. Beer, any questions from your side?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Chaukwe, I just want to check also if you are in. Alright, okay, um, thank you very much, um, for the indulgence. Um, we, we are resuming the, the, the hearing after a very short, um, adjournment to consider whether or not we must proceed on the hearing. Sorry, on, on hearing the merits of, uh, the maximum gas price application by SASSO Gas, given the, the, the concerns that were raised earlier on. Um, the members, uh, of the regulator, uh, that are part of the panel today, um, have considered the matter and we found that uh, it will be prudent for the energy regulator to postpone this matter on the basis that, um, it is important, uh, that all parties, um, um, are given an opportunity to meaningfully comment on the changes, uh, pertaining to the particulars of the application to the extent that there are changes in terms of the cost, um, that is associated with each source of gas, uh, and the fact that this will also change the outcome or the, the, the possible outcome of the decision of the energy regulator. It is on that basis that the matter, it is postponed. Um, we have also considered the time period for postponement. However, uh, the postponement is still a dear. Uh, we will not put, uh, the, a specific timeframe, uh, simply because of the processes that we need to, to take the revised discussion document, uh, through. Uh, however, we are going to commit to make sure that, um, the, uh, this postponement is not going to adversely affect the, um, the, the finalization of this matter and also, uh, to ensure that, that the licensee is going to provide a sufficient notice uh, to the stakeholders or the customers out there. So the matter now is postponed, uh, sinetir. And the hearing is now closed, uh, on the issue of, um, the maximum gas price and that is the decision of the energy regulator. Um, having said that, uh, we're now, uh, moving on to, um, hearing the, 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 the merits on the application uh, by SASSO Gas on the gas, uh, transmission. Um, again, um, I would like, uh, to then invite, um, SASSO Gas, uh, Mr. Menkes, uh, to, if, if you are the one to lead the, 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 the SASSO Gas team on this matter. Um, we take it that the, uh, the oath that you have taken on the other matter, it's, it is still valid just to inform you so that we can proceed straight now, uh, to the presentation regarding the gas transmission, uh, application. Over to you, Mr. Menkes.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, the, um, the portion of the, the, the presentation that deals with the, um, that deals with the transmission tariff application is very short. Um, and just see if I can get it to a full screen there. So, as indicated, the, um, the application is for the, uh, the two financial years FY twenty six and FY twenty seven. This application is based on the twenty seven tariff guidelines and is, um, uh, consistent with those tariff guidelines as well as with the, the previous submissions that we've made in, 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 in uh, the tariff applications over the past few years. Um, the, um, the different zones, um, is, is, is zone one is, is the, um, the inland portion of the pipeline, uh, network. And then zone two is the, the Secunda-Vitbank middle part of the pipeline network. And then the KZN portion is zo- zone three. And as, um, indicated in the tariff application, the, um, the, the, the third column in the table on the screen indicates the current tariffs that have been, um, approved for the current financial year. And we confirmed then that the application that, um, SASSO Gas is making for the approval of transmission tariffs for the FY twenty six and FY twenty seven uh, periods is set out for the three different zones in the, um, in the fourth and the fifth column in, in that table. As is indicated in the NASA consultation document on this application, um, NASA has, um, reviewed and, um, and scrutinized the calculations of the, um, of the tariff and that these tariffs are, um, uh, the calculations between SASSO Gas and NASA, um, in getting to these, um, uh, tariffs that's applied for, um, is aligned and that there is, um, no material differences in the outcome of the, the calculation. And on that basis, the request that, um, that, uh, the applicant then is putting before NASA is that in accordance with the application under consideration by NASA, that the tariffs for zone one, zone two and zone three be approved, um, respectfully, uh, respectfully for, um, FY twenty six and FY twenty seven as set out in the tariff application. Um, Madam Chair, that is the submission that we want to make in respect of the transmission tariffs. And, um, obviously my colleague, um, Mr. Beer, um, and, and Mr. Easterman is available also to the extent that there is any questions or any, um, technical elucidation that's required on this, this part of the application. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very much, uh, Mr. Menkes. Uh, members of the energy regulator, uh, do you have any questions of clarity with regards to the transmission, uh, tariffs? For the three zones by show fans members? Any questions? Mr. Beer, any questions from your side?
I'm, I'm fine with the presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let me check, Mr. Mkiza?
Over, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Mr. Menkes, um, uh, the, the concern around, um, the SWM tariff, um, um, i- i- it is a bit expensive and it's getting expensive. And, um, I, I don't know what plans, um, SASSO ha- have uh, or has, uh, in respect of making sure that, um, you know, there are efficiencies, uh, improvements in terms of efficiencies around this. Uh, the issue of the volume risk, uh, is, 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 is one of those issues. Uh, and, um, and it means that customers will therefore be, you know, be made to pay, uh, very high transportation cost in respect of, um, um, the energy that, or, yeah, the energy that goes into that, that, that area of Secunda-Vitbank middle back. What are the plans around this in terms of improvements? I mean, we do want to, um, um, see what improvements are going to be made. And it cannot be that simply because the volumes are not gonna be increased um, and therefore the tariff will keep on going up. Otherwise then, the energy regulator, when things are like this, will of the be required to, um, um, uh, you know, intervene to make sure that there will be some efficiencies that are derived, uh, uh, out of this and deal with issues of, um, volume risk. Um, that, uh, will therefore make sure that customers are not the ones that uh, must always, uh, be on the receiving end. Can you please, um, comment on this? Thank you.
Yeah, I think, um, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make one or two initial comments and then I will ask, um, um, my colleagues to, 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 to support and, and provide, um, you know, further detailed information about that. I think the, um, the, um, the two areas in which we consistently look at, um, uh, improvement, um, and, and increase of efficiency is obviously in reducing and, 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 uh, maintaining the operational cost of the particular facility under check and to make sure that the, that any increases in the cost, um, in that regard is, is kept to a minimum and is, um, is, is managed in order to mitigate the impact of the operational cost on the, the tariff. Um, as far as the volume is concerned, in that regard, um, obviously we are cooperating and, and collaborating with the customers in a particular area in order to, um, to see to what extent, uh, opportunities present itself for the increase of volumes. Um, but, um, ultimately, the, um, the, the actual volume that flows through the facility does have a direct bearing on the, the, the ultimate tariff that, um, that, um, is associated with the, the particular portion of the, the, the pipeline network. Um, I don't know, uh, Mr. Easterman and, and Miss, uh, Debeer, anything that you would like to be, uh, would like to add to, to that?
Yes, Chair, um, if I may, I think, um, what Bear's pointing out is that, that, um, the, the, um, if, if that tariff is cal- when the tariff is calculated in, in terms of the methodology, um, as, as it stands, it is essentially double. So what, what we have done in recognition of the cost of operating that network with a much lower volume than, than would be ideal is that there's already a, essentially, uh, uh, almost a fifty percent, um, reduc- uh, discount on, on that tariff. Um, at, at this point, you know, costs have been cut as far as, as far as they basically can be cut. And unless we, we get, you know, additional volume and we can find additional customers in that line, you know, that line or that distribute, uh, transmission area is, is certainly at a point where it is sub economical at the moment. Um, thank you.
Uh, th- th- thank you, thank you very much. Um, you let me allow, uh, Miss, uh, Debeer?
Um, Madam Chair, I support what Mr. JP and Mr. Rudy is saying.
O- o- okay, um, uh, uh, yes, as I indicated, that the issue of volume risk is not one that must always be borne by, uh, customers. Uh, because it does not provide an incentive on the part of the, of the licensee to im- uh, to increase volumes. Obviously, there would not be additional customers if the licensee is constrained in terms of, um, uh, of additional volumes to be transported through that line. Uh, so, uh, we, we also need some signals there, uh, in terms of, um, whether there are additional volumes in fact that, um, are available. Um, so, so that it is not a situation where volumes are low and there is no potential to increase the output or the throughput, um, uh, in the, in this line. And therefore, uh, the, 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 the price at the end of the day, uh, it becomes a, a bit, a bit high. So that is the issue there. And therefore, if it goes like this, obviously, as you know, that this is a network, it's a natural monopoly, we understand. But also at the same time, we need, um, as the regulator to make sure that the interest of customers are also safeguarded, uh, when it comes to, um, the, 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 the cost of transportation. So that is why I am asking this question to start off with. I see, uh, Mr. Easterman, you have your camera on, I don't know if you could want to come in on this?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, I think, you know, we, we do understand. Um, I think the, the, the major challenge that we do face is that, you know, the gas, the available, the available overall gas resource at this point is, is declining. So, you know, we've made a commitment that we'll supply gas until the end of our financial year, um, FY twenty eight. And we've also gone to market to say that we, you know, we, we, we are investigating whether it is possible to, to beyond that period for, certainly for bridging period until LNG becomes available, make gas available. So, tho- those investigations are, are still on, on the go. But, you know, in, in the interim, it is not likely that there's going to be additional gas that can be delivered in that area. Thank you.
Alright, no, I, I hear that, thank you very much. And I think, uh, we have also been informed, uh, um, about the, about the, um, you know, those plans by SASSO. But if I were to come to issues of, um, uh, the period of, um, uh, this pipeline being fully depreciated, is SASSO in the, in a position to, uh, advise, um, this committee with regards to this, uh, line being fully, um, uh, depreciated? That's the first thing. The second one is, um, on issues that were there before with regards to maintenance, where there were issues of, uh, gas supply interruptions. And the extent to which, um, the performance of this pipeline, inasmuch as the volumes are constrained and also there were issues of performance of this pipeline, yet customers have to pay. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to understand whether the issues of maintenance um, have now been addressed fully in terms of this pipeline?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we, we are addressing, um, maintenance, maintenance on the line. Um, it is done as, as, um, as scheduled. And, um, I, I think, you know, in recognition of that, we, we've also the discount that we are actually applying, um, of, um, of, of what the, what the calculated tariff in terms of the methodology it would be goes some ways in addressing that.
be made to pay a very high transportation cost in respect of the energy that goes into that area of Secunda-Vitbank middle bank. What are the plans around this in terms of improvements? I mean, we do want to see what improvements are going to be made and it cannot be that simply because the volumes are not going to be increased and therefore the tariff will keep on going up. Otherwise then, the energy regulator, when things are like this, will also be required to, you know, intervene to make sure that there will be some efficiencies that are derived out of this and deal with issues of volume risk that will therefore make sure that customers are not the ones that must always be on the receiving end. Can you please comment on this? Thank you.
I think, Madam Chair, I'll make one or two initial comments and then I will ask my colleagues to support and provide, you know, further detailed information about that. I think the two areas in which we consistently look at improvement and increase of efficiency is obviously in reducing and maintaining the operational cost of the particular facility under check and to make sure that any increases in the cost in that regard is kept to a minimum and is managed in order to mitigate the impact of the operational cost on the tariff. As far as the volume is concerned, in that regard, obviously, we are cooperating and collaborating with the customers in a particular area in order to see to what extent opportunities present itself for the increase of volumes. But ultimately, the actual volume that flows through the facility does have a direct bearing on the ultimate tariff that is associated with the particular portion of the pipeline network. I don't know, Mr. Easterman and Miss DeBier, anything that you would like to add to that?
Yes, Chair, if I may, I think what Beer is pointing out is that if that tariff is calculated, when the tariff is calculated in terms of the methodology as it stands, it is essentially double. So what we have done in recognition of the cost of operating that network with a much lower volume than would be ideal is that there's already essentially almost a 50% discount on that tariff. At this point, you know, costs have been cut as far as they basically can be cut and unless we get, you know, additional volume and we can find additional customers in that line, you know, that line or that distribution, that transmission area is certainly at a point where it is sub economical at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. You let me allow Miss DeBier.
Madam Chair, I support what Mr. JP and Mr. Rudy is saying.
Okay, yes, as I indicated, that the issue of volume risk is not one that must always be borne by customers because it does not provide an incentive on the part of the licensee to increase volumes. Obviously, there would not be additional customers if the licensee is constrained in terms of additional volumes to be transported through that line. So we also need some signals there in terms of whether there are additional volumes in fact that are available so that it is not a situation where volumes are low and there is no potential to increase the output or the throughput in this line and therefore the price at the end of the day becomes a bit high. So that is the issue there. And therefore, if it goes like this, obviously, as you know, that this is a network, it's a natural monopoly, we understand, but also at the same time, we need, as the regulator, to make sure that the interest of customers are also safeguarded when it comes to the cost of transportation. So that is why I am asking this question to start off with. I see, Mr. Easterman, you have your camera on. I don't know if you want to come in on this.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, I think, you know, we do understand. I think the major challenge that we do face is that, you know, the gas, the available overall gas resource at this point is declining. So, you know, we've made a commitment that we'll supply gas until the end of our financial year FY28 and we've also gone to market to say that we, you know, we are investigating whether it is possible to be beyond that period for, certainly for bridging period until LNG becomes available, make gas available. So those investigations are still on the go. But, you know, in the interim, it is not likely that there's going to be additional gas that can be delivered in that area. Thank you.
All right, no, I hear that, thank you very much. And I think we have also been informed about the, you know, those plans by Sasol. But if I were to come to issues of the period of this pipeline being fully depreciated, is Sasol in a position to advise this committee with regards to this line being fully depreciated? That's the first thing. The second one is on issues that were there before with regards to maintenance, where there were issues of gas supply interruptions and the extent to which the performance of this pipeline, inasmuch as the volumes are constrained and also there were issues of performance of this pipeline, yet customers have to pay. So I just wanted to understand whether the issues of maintenance have now been addressed fully in terms of this pipeline?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we are addressing maintenance on the line. It is done as scheduled. And I think, you know, in recognition of that, we've also the discount that we are actually applying off what the calculated tariff in terms of the methodology would be goes some ways in addressing that. We can, if there is a request, Madam Chair, we can provide the information in terms of the depreciation. depreciation of that line. And at this point, you know, probably not completely depreciated because it has a useful life of 80 years. But we can provide information in terms of, in writing to answer that question and unfortunately, don't have the information at hand immediately.
Not a problem, thank you very much. And if you can provide that, because I think that is the engineering, yes, not necessarily the economic life in terms of its performance, its efficiencies and all of that. So that's the one thing, you can provide that information. And the second thing is the progress in terms of addressing the maintenance issues that the energy regulator raised previously, which resulted in gas supply interruptions and which occurred, I think, on three occasions in a short space of time in this line. With that, then I would like to see if there are any sort of closing remarks on this aspect, not closing remarks as such, but maybe any additional point before I move to the other presenters.
Madam Chair, we've got nothing further to add to the submissions already, May. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mengis, for your submissions. Let me now turn to Iguas A as the presenter today. Iguas A, we've got Mr. Yako Human for now the gas transmission application. Mr. Human, I just want to also, just on record, to indicate that the oath that you have taken earlier on in the earlier hearing, it is still applicable here. You may go ahead with your submissions on the transmission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Iguas A intended only to provide submissions today on the maximum gas price and we therefore defer the transmission application, transmission price application of Sasol to the regulator. Thank you very much, Chair.
You're very much, Mr. Human, we appreciate that. That then takes us to the end of today's hearing, one on the maximum price as well as now on the gas transmission tariff application by Sasol Gas. I would like to then see, just as we normally do, see if Sasol Gas has any concluding remarks. Mr. Mengis?
Yes, Madam Chair, obviously, on the transmission license, I think no further remarks to be submitted as far as the price application is concerned.
On a lighter note, Mr. Mengis, we have already licensed Sasol for the transmission license. It's just the tariff now, the cost of operating that line. Thank you.
On the tariff application, no further submissions and with regards to the postponement of the hearing on the price, we will engage with the personnel of the regulator to make sure that the necessary information is complete before the regulator.
Very good, thank you very much. We appreciate that Sasol Gas and your cooperation with the personnel of the regulator and all the information that they will require. Thank you very much to Sasol Gas, to Iguas A and to all of the attendees that observed today's hearing and for them making sure that nothing was done to interrupt the proceedings of today. The hearing is now, it has now come to an end and the stakeholders will be informed of the new date of the hearing as well as the comment period with regards to the revised discussion document. It might be on a short period of time of 14 days just to allow stakeholders to deal with the additional information and its impact. Thank you very much. The hearing is now closed. Thank you, members.